Are they gonna wear their own masks? How do you feel about that?
I think if they, if they wanna wear their own mask and bring their own masks of one being supplied, I think some people feel more comfortable that way. I do believe we need to have some disposable masks available for the ones who wanna come in and work that don't have a mask. June 1st should be our hard date to start this. That way, we got plenty of time to get it going.
I think, I think June 1st is reasonable because, like I said, I don't know how soon I can get all this in place, that these guards.
But we've got other offices outside the courthouse that can probably open up and be safe. I mean, I think the transfer station will be okay. Soil and water would probably be okay to go ahead and open up starting next week.
I think.
As long as they have, as long as they have that in place.
Yeah, I think so. The transfer station, they don't go inside, is, I've never been out there. So they just pull up, it would just be one person working at the transfer station, is that right?
Yeah.
So we can get her some masks.
Just one, one person in there at a time to do their track. We gotta get her a computer though, guys. And I'm working on that right now through work, for the tickets and the printers. And we have to get new pricing, but we can work on that later. But I think we need to start this opening up and make sure we can get it going by June 1st for the courthouse with the employees, at least.
Yeah. I believe there was a computer for her in the big purchase that we made, it's just not been out there.
Yeah, I have to get back with her. She said there was no computer when she texted me this weekend.
As far as Carroll Manor has not opened up, the nursing homes and long-term care facilities, they're gonna have to continue as they are right now.
Right.
And that's not a, you know, it's not an option for them to open yet to outside visitors and anybody else being able to go in as a, as a resident.
I agree with that. If they, if they leave, they do not come back.
Yes, they're not allowed. We, I already put that protocol in place, wrote that and sent it to Carroll Manor.
Okay.
They, they, even at the hospitals, when a nursing home patient leaves the hospital, they've been sent to the hospital and it's time to go back. They're sending them to White County, it's called a swing bed. And they're staying there until they can get them back into their original residence, whether assisted living or a long-term care facility. So, until the governor opens that up, we're, we're kind of, our hands are tied because he's got those closed. So, right about then. So it'd be the county highway, the transfer station. And what else did you say?
Now, the soil and water.
Soil and water.
You've got the, out there, 4H. I don't know.
People wanted to come on and comment too, so the, let's have.
Apps here. The thing is, with the extension office, she might have something from the Purdue. Someone, this is what somebody had chatted. Someone will be at the door keeping track of what office everyone is entering and make sure there is enough space, square footage, to allow them into that office. Also, a lot of people do have a, not have a fever, but can test positive. So, hang on just one minute. Maybe that'll help. Trying to get his phone in there. Yes, and someone says, remember, we're not all in the courthouse, and we are.
Right, I was just saying, 35 sneeze guards for the courthouse alone, I haven't had a check, no.
And I have sent Angie numbers over the weekend about how many in different offices, if you wanna check with her. 911 is, has stated that with nine full-time staff, that opening up to the public could critically affect our department. Most likely, if one of our staff is exposed, two will be, since we work a two per shift.
True, yeah.
Someone said, please remember face coverings don't have to be a medical grade. Also asking about my custodian is requesting his part-time health authorized to come back to work. He probably is one of those that's in that critical stage. Maybe not over 65, but, but anyway, another thing is we need to discuss safety options for outside courthouse employees as well. This, the soil and water has to go with the USDA guidelines.
And what are those?
Well, she just, I don't know. She discussed that at the last meeting, that's why we kinda got mixed up with her. So we would probably, to her directly, Valerie. And maybe Joanne Litten has asked that too. Should officers pop outside of the courthouse, talk with Valerie and Mike about opening for the employees and have suggestions, I think that's.
The extension office can call Purdue, cause there's a bunch of safety equipment just sitting down there that I went around together. She can probably help out the county by calling down there and requesting some of that.
Well, here's another thing. The family health clinic is part of Purdue. And I asked Jim Lehman, how come they're not getting their supplies from them? He said, we've called and asked and asked, and nobody will help them get supplies. Which is kinda weird, because one of the professors, Mr. Hartman, or Dr. Hartman, got ahold of me and said he had supplies ready. Could he, did we want any? And I got what I could get from him and helped out family health clinic with those, because they're gonna start doing testing for their patients, they're gonna start doing COVID testing. They were supposed to start Friday. So maybe Joanne could get some PPE from, talk to them about getting gloves and masks and from, from them for her office. I could get ahold of Mr. Hartman and ask him if we could get some more. I mean, he gave me what they had last week. And definitely, we needed to get the family health clinic up and testing. So, what they could give me last week was 100 masks, 100 gowns. They gave those, we gave those to the family health clinic. Mike and I can come out and talk to, and we need to walk the other offices. We just haven't been able to do that this morning. Walked the courthouse and found out 35 sneeze guards for the courthouse alone. So I don't know what we'll need for the other offices, but we'll have to go out and check that out.
So we just need to keep planning and set, and get our goal, or at least in June 1st, soft opening to the employees only. Keep the outside offices, they all got their kind of own recommendations. And boards, they gotta go by and let them make their decisions. The sheriff's department, I would like to keep closed to the public, but that's.
Uh-oh, I lost Steve.
Yeah, somebody keeps muting me. Now, the sheriff's department, you know, it, it's our building, but they, they run it. So I, I think it needs to stay closed, but that's still up to the sheriff. I'm sure with him having some possible bad situations in there with people getting exposed, that he'll probably wanna keep that closed. Still, I'd like to do a soft opening starting June 1st, get our custodian back and get him the help he needs, cause he, he's the, like, the main vein of this right now, besides the health department. In my opinion.
Well, Steve, would you like to make that into a motion?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion that June 1st would be a soft opening. All recommendations by the health department need to be put in place. My custodian, he can bring in one part-time person to help, to help him, cause he's gonna need help. It's gonna be a lot of work. And the outside agencies that's not in the courthouse, go by your board's recommendations on, on the opening.
As long as, one thing, as long as we all understand that this is, we're shooting for June 1st, but if our numbers skyrocket like they did in Cass County, we'll have to reassess.
Right.
With that.
I agree.
Okay.
I agree on that.
Steve?
Yes.
When are you talking about bringing the custodian back?
As soon as possible.
Soon as possible?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause we need to start doing, you know, he'll have to go through and sanitize again, and he'll have to start making a list with the health department on what shields to get in order. Cause I'll have to come through him.
Are the, you, do you intend for the shields to be permanent fixtures or temporary fixtures?
I believe it needs to be temporary.
Okay, well, they could be made, put together by a custodian, I believe.
Right.
I've been else, been a couple places and made, homemade them, basically.
Right.
Glass and two by fours and two by, or two by twos. And they could be stuffed together, I think, for a lot less than a $4,000, $5,000 dollar figure. Take a little engineering and a little, some hardware, but it could be done if you can get the place, if you can get the material and get two buys and that sort of thing.
Right.
As, I don't know how available that is.
I think we need to leave that up to him on how much time he has.
Okay.
Do, by recommendation of Keith on if he wants to do that, or if he wants to have them bought, cause that'd be a lot of work to get that all done.
Steve, a story. He's told me that if he had to do all that, he's gonna need some help, and he will, because that's quite a bit. Do that. Another thought, and I don't know how Mike and Valerie feel about it, I mentioned Valerie. I put some masks, just cloth homemade that someone gave me through the marathon up here, because they didn't have it in. They put plastic, not plastic, but they put kind of a heavy-duty plastic. Counter. I think CBS has done that, someone told me in CBS, they were there, I haven't been in CBS, I think.
Yes, CBS has got a big, like a big, like a theme thing over there, covering.
Not. Some of the areas is hard to touch, it's often the expense. So if the heavier-duty plastic, not your typical stuff, but if you get that and tape it, I don't think it's gonna hurt that, that's where I'm seeing it. Marathon, and Penny just said that's what CBS did, I haven't been in there, but I did take the marathon last week. Thought.
Well, and are we gonna be required to have them? You know, I mean, who knows what the governor's gonna come up with next? Are we gonna be quite, required to have sneeze guards? Do you wanna have sneeze guards put in place continuous, just for the safety of our employees throughout, regardless of the COVID? It's something to think about.
Well, I think the sneeze guards are a good thing to have. We in the restaurant industry have to have guards and stuff like that all the time. I mean, if we're gonna have a salad bar, we're gonna have a sneeze guard. If we're gonna have any kind of buffet, it has to have that. There's lots of places where we're required to have sneeze guards now. And I, I think it's a good idea to have those up, that barrier up. That sneeze guard, I think it's a great deal more protection than the mask is. The mask, I heard an immunologist on Fox saying that most of the masks that people are wearing are about as effective as putting up chain-linked fence to keep, keep out mosquitoes. That they, they just don't, they don't work that well, because viruses are so small that a cotton mask, they just go right through. Now, would, it does protect from, if someone directly coughs on somebody, or spittle, or something like that, but the sneeze guard would be much more effective. Keep somebody from just breathing on somebody else. And I, I don't see any problem with this, we get them, leaving them up.
That's what I, I think that, that's the best.
Well, let's just do that then.
Okay.
Get them ordered and do that.
Now.
Make sure they fit in, right?
We're hearing that there's supposed to be significant amount more money coming down from the state for these purposes. So, nobody has said yet how much Carroll County will get, but I think we can count on that there's going to be some support from the state for these types of things. So sneeze guards, masks, all, all those that are necessary for us to protect everybody, to protect our employees and to protect the people coming in.
Well, also, when you were moving backwards, when you were talking about Flora engaged is doing business, you know, loans for small businesses. Shane Evan's got a grant. I, I don't know if anybody was aware of that, for small businesses.
Okay, I missed part of that. What, what about a grant?
Okay, you said that Flora was giving out small business loans at a different rate. I think Shane Evans got a grant for small businesses in Delphi.
Oh.
I don't know if anybody was aware of that. That he applied for a grant, and he got money for small businesses in Delphi.
Okay, good.
Just something for you guys to keep in mind. Okay.
The soil and water says is, the USDA is on lockdown. But take into account what the county, they're waiting your decision now. Just as a note, we are able to meet our clients in the field, service our needs with limited in-house visits from the public, and have been doing so. We really aren't concerned. Oops. Lost it.
Well, she has a board, she can go by her board. We can give the board the recommendation to do what they think they need to protect their employees.
We are six feet apart. And. Says I have five new ones, but that's not.
I think so, we'll take care of their facility out there and, and abide by the rules that come down to them from, from the organizations that they work with. And we, we can pretty well just trust to them to be able to handle their own situation. I'm with Steve, we need to get things back open again. I'm sure tired of this whole thing myself, but we got, we have to do it. Yeah, okay, we have a motion on the floor, Steve, Steve, repeat your motion.
Well, I kinda lost it, I guess.
I did too, that's why I.
We can do a, what I call a soft opening on June 1st, after we get our safety in place. All other outside offices, recommendation of their boards, you know, follow your board's safety recommendations. We, we need to bring Keith back and a part-time employee to help that, y'all know. And we shoot for that June 1st, have a soft opening, employees only.
Okay, so the motion is, June 1st, we will be planning on a soft opening, employees only. And also, the second part of the motion is that we will bring our custodian back to working full-time. Is that right?
And he'll need assistance, so.
Okay, full-time, starting when? Starting today, starting tomorrow, what?
Sooner the better, I, I believe. That way, we can start getting this implemented. Let's go take time to get stuff measured and see which ones you need for shields and stuff.
Okay. Well, I haven't seen him today, so I'll just.
I can hear you, Lauren.
Does the shields include outside offices? Should they be, they should be included if they, if they request a shield?
If we have an outside office, I think we should include it.
If they, if they so need.
Yeah, let's see, who would that be, Lauren?
Well, I don't know, I mean.
Soil and water, probably, they, they have counters out there that they could work, probably. Extension office could use them. We have to look at the transfer station, see if they need it or not.
We can put a screen door with plexiglass on that outside with a hole in it, just so they can pass the, the money back and through.
I think that's a good idea. I can stop out there right after the meeting today. You're quarantined, Steve, so you're, you're pulling a chain to your trigger there.
Yeah.
I can stop out there after the meeting and.
Keith just texted me and said that he'd be, he's ready to come back to work, so tomorrow's fine with him.
Okay, so your motion is tomorrow, he coming back?
Yeah.
Hello?
Hello. Larry Leach, are you on?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to have, I, I, I have flags that people, I have a dozen people coming in to pick up flags for Memorial Day. I have these flags stored in my office right now. Do you not want people to come in there to get those flags? Should I meet them outside the courthouse, or should I meet them at home? What should I do?
Meet at the east door.
I think we need to, need to do it outside, or if we can.
Okay, I can set up, I can put a message on my phone and have them call me, and I can set up meetings that way. Another question is, should I go ahead and plan to have Memorial Day ceremonies? Is that a decision that we should be made probably later on? Should I go ahead and just plan to do that? That's when we decorate 12 cemeteries, then we have a, a ceremony program then at the courthouse on Memorial Day.
How many people come to that, Larry?
Well, at, at the courthouse, you could have, you know, 20, 30 people. And a courthouse is supposed to be open for refreshments. So you probably would cancel that. And then at the ceremonies, we plan to decorate a certain grave and publish that in the paper, and probably there would be some family members there to hear what we have to say, to see the ceremony.
I think if it's outside, you're less likely to catch something. The courthouse will have to stay close to the public or something like that.
Okay, I probably.
That's something I don't wanna, you know, to me, that's a big, big issue. I, I'd like to have that, as long as we can keep our social distancing. We gotta honor those who gave for us.
Certainly do. However, I don't know that the rules allow us to do that with 20 out there right now, outside.
Yeah.
I think we need to. You can make some plans, Larry, but I think we need to probably wait until the second meeting of the month here to, to see what the governor's had to say on that. What do you think, Lauren?
Okay.
Sounds reasonable.
Yeah, okay, okay. I'll just go ahead and plan for it, but realize that it may not happen.
May not happen, just depending on how the governor releases the, the rules on what we have, we would win. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. By the way, Larry, I appreciate your input there on this.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor. Did, did I get a second, Warren?
No, I had to say, get some clarification there, but, no, I will second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to have a soft opening, employees only, set for June 1st, tentatively. This is providing we have all the glass and everything up, everything done. And that our custodian begins working Tuesday, tomorrow, full-time. Is there anything needs to be added to that?
No, he can bring in a part-time person if needed.
He may need a part-time person? Okay.
Yeah.
What do you think, Lauren, is that concluded in your second?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yes. Yeah, include that's fine.
Okay, so I would call for a vote then. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 Aye, okay. Is there any other essential business that we can take care of?
Well, I have one thing, I talked with Ted about the land at Carroll Manor.
Yes.
Proposed Yale project. Or you were, that's probably not gonna happen this season.
Well, I, I don't anticipate it happening this season, right?
Right, we need to extend that contract, so that, so we don't have to mow that acreage. The crop can be planted and be taken off September, October range, probably.
I'd agree with that.
Okay, make a motion.
I'll make the motion that we extend the balance of the property at Carroll Manor to be tillable to Mr. Jim Snowbird.
I second that.
At the current rate, $200, what we suggested.
I'd second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All of those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Anything else that we need to take up, Beth, do we have anything else? Okay, Beth says there's something I need to talk to Ted about, what was it, Beth? Okay. Ted, we have a emergency family medical leave expansion policy here. And emergency paid sick leave. Are those two things that you are recommending that we take up today?
Those were prepared by Wagner, Irwin, and Schiel. And they need to be adopted to conform the county's policies to the federal act. So the motion would be to approve both of those policies and request the council to do the same.
So said.
Okay, have, Lauren, Steve, have you both had an opportunity to look at these?
I have not, but I, I, I trust my attorney on this one.
That's something we have to do, Ted?
Yes, sir.
I don't think that we have a choice.
Who's, Ted, who's this mandated by?
Federal government, it was the, one of the early acts that Congress passed in response to the COVID-19 pandemic.
I think we have to have that in place if we ever need assistance later on, that we got all our ducks in a row.
Okay. Well, it's a fairly wordy thing here that I have, so if you would like for me to read it all, I could, but if Ted says it's mandated by us, for us. Yeah, each of you, I think, got it in your email, on your phone. Of course, it may be so small, it's very difficult to read, I have a lot of trouble with that.
I glanced over it, it's just language above my head, I guess I can say.
No, I don't think it is, Steve, but it's, it is legalese, so. These are just rules as to how we are to be doing paid sick leave during this time, and how we're going to do family medical leave during this time. Yeah, to be in compliance with federal rules, so I don't, I don't, you do have any choice but to pass it. So Ted, what do you say the motion should be?
To approve both of those policies and request the council to do the same. Because they are amendments to the personnel policies handbook.
Okay. Would, would either of you want, wanna make that motion?
Yeah, so said, it's Ted said.
Okay, Steve has made a motion, Lauren, do you wanna second that, or?
I'll second, I'll second, I'm, I'm choice.
Yeah, that's kinda where I feel about it. Okay, so I have a motion and I have a second to adopt both the federal emergency family medical meeting expansion, expansion policy and, and the emergency paid sick leave policy, which will both be part of our employee handbook. And we are also going to be requesting funding for that from the county council. And we are also going to be requesting funding for that from the county council. Am I correct in that motion?
No, no, just the council's approval because it's a handbook. It, handbook, uh, uh, amendment. And it, but it does involve compensation, so the council should probably also sign off on it too.
Okay, okay. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion passed. We have adopted those. Anything else now? That is, uh, according to agenda, any other essential business we need to take care of?
And Bill, I got one thing. I just, can you, can everybody hear me okay?
I can.
Um, I just wanted to give, uh, this has nothing to do with COVID nineteen, um, but in the midst of all this. Uh, the court of appeals case that the county had regarding the nine-one tapes, um, for the floor fire, that continued through the process and we got a ruling from the court last week. And the court ruled in the county's favor, meaning that Fox fifty-nine and the, uh, committee for freedom of the press were not entitled to those tapes. And so, uh, basically overturned the judge, not basically did overturn the judge in Marion County, remaining the case backed Marion County. Um, so the attorney for the county will need to file a motion for summary judgment down there and then it'll get granted and the case will be dismissed. So huge win for us. Um, basically Fox fifty-nine, uh, the free, uh, press corporation that backed, uh, backed Fox fifty-nine, they were wrong. Um, those tapes are confidential, part of an investigatory, uh, record, and so big win for us, big win for the state of Indiana. Um, just very, very good news.
All right, I'm, when Ted sent me that, uh, ruling, he, he prefaced it with, uh, wonderful news and I, I think that's certainly the, the, the case. Now, it's my understanding that they had forty-five days, um, to file an appeal though, right? To this, to the state Supreme Court?
That's correct. They can do that, um, that they have that right to do that. I don't. I feel pretty confident that even if they do that, it's just going to delay the inevitable that those, uh, records are going to remain, uh, confidential and exempt from FOIA. Uh, I think the Marion County judge was just wrong. Um, I think the, the advisor, the administrative law judge that they had, uh, on the very beginning was wrong. Um, I've always said that since, you know, this started. And so I don't think the Supreme Court's ruling is going to be any different. Um, but they do have that time to file that in the Supreme Court and then try to get. A sway that court, um, the other way. So, uh, I, I don't know if that's going to happen or not. Um, but I, I think the Supreme Court's going to rule the same way the court of appeals did, um, because I think it's pretty clear. That those are part of an investigation that's open and they're exempt from any kind of FOIA request.
Well, I appreciate you bringing that up to us because that's, uh. Uh, I think was a major concern to, uh, certainly the commissioners and, and you and several other people, uh, and, uh. It, it's an example of the good guys do win once in a while. That information that they requested that could have in some way harmed our investigation or the state's investigation to the case. Of the four little girls who were murdered, uh, I think, uh, I think you were right in your, uh. And your predecessor was right in saying, no, they, uh, they can't have those. And I appreciate your stand and, uh, and appreciate, uh, my fellow commissioners that have stood with you too on this and, and I. Will freely admit, I was wrong in the first place because I just took it, um, as the, um, um, o- open door law said, turn it over. And after I heard all sides of it, I said, wait a minute, I was wrong. They, they shouldn't have turned that over and, and the right actions were taken on our level. And I appreciate it.
Yeah, well, I appreciate you guys kind of backing my stance and, and going forward with the appeal. I, I know it, it was a, a financial burden to the county, but. Um, at some point, I think you got to look at the bigger picture and, and money becomes less important at that point. And so I really, really appreciate you guys. Taking the stands for this. It was important and not in my case, but I think for many criminal cases across the state of Indiana. And so, um, you know. Biggest thank you from me. I, I know IPAC. Has a big thank you for you too. That's a prosecuting attorney's counsel, um, and even the attorney general's office chimed in, uh, backing us as well. So I know all those people. That were involved appreciate the county taking a stand because it was an important issue. And so, uh, you know, thank you from the bottom of my heart and, and so far, so good.
We appreciate working with you.
Thanks, Nick.
From nine-one-one said she would like to thank the commissioners, Mr. Johnson, and the prosecutor's office for supporting this argument.
Good, good.
Thank you.
I know there were some out in the community that wanted to try to make us out like we were fooled for, uh. Taking a stand on this and that we were wasting money, but, uh. I certainly didn't want to be the one that, um, wound up. Making it so that whoever is guilty of this awful crime would walk free because we didn't do what we were supposed to do. Those little girls need justice and they'll never forget it. I mean, it'll never, nothing will ever pay them back for what they lost, their lives. But, uh, we, we stood together, all of us, and, uh, and I appreciate it. Hey, is there anything else that we need to bring up?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to adjourn. And I would call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you to all of you for attending.
Thank you, guys. Be safe.